People get to see me looking like a professor.
I'm just, it's weird, did he reduce it?
Yeah. I'll have my other eye back too. I can see.
All right. We'll get this school committee meeting called to order for September 1st and we'll start the presidency.
Oh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's see, we'll do our audio disclosure. It does not appear that anyone in the audience is recording. Uh, I am guessing that there is no public comment either. We will move on to our minutes, uh, to American sent agenda. Uh, in your packet are, uh, minutes, uh, minutes from our past meetings, uh, from August 24th as well as July 11th.
Mr. Chair.
Larry?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from July 11th and August 24th as presented.
Uh, I'll second it. Motion in a second, any discussion?
Hi there. Hello.
Uh, if, uh, no other discussion?
Did you have some?
Well, no, cause I, I can vote on the 11th, but I can't vote on the 24th after I've been staying.
Okay.
Well, I guess rule of necessity, I could vote on it because there's only three here right now.
Yeah, it's on three, so a rule of necessity, you can't.
Yeah, okay.
You can also take a motion to postpone this agenda item.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I will draw my motion then, and make a new motion.
Oh, wouldn't it, cause even if Karen shows up, she wasn't here either. So she can't vote on it, like, do I have to?
Then we'll have to do the necessity then.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Chair declares a vote of necessity for minutes on, uh, August 24th. If you'd be willing to make a new motion, uh, that separates the minutes.
So, so, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, accept the minutes of July 11th, 2022 as presented.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor, Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of August 24th as presented.
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All right, uh, the, for this purpose, the Chair does declare a vote of necessity, uh, for the August 24th meeting and therefore, uh, all committee members will be eligible to vote on this motion, uh, regardless of attendance at the meeting on August 24th. Any other discussion on the motion?
Nope.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Greg? Aye. And the Chair votes aye. Thank you.
I was just gonna, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna request that we move back to public comment in case these people who found their way up to the fourth floor, uh, have something that they'd like to request or comment on or whatever.
Larry? Would you like to make a motion to revisit agenda item number four?
A second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Karen, if you'd like to vote on this motion, we are, uh, the motion is to return to agenda item number four, uh, to open up public comment in case our guests have anything they'd like to present.
We're just attending for a specific topic, so.
Well, this would be the time.
Okay, yeah, so I think it's on the list, um, it's for scholarships.
Well, we need to take a vote.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, it is on the agenda?
Yeah.
It's the agenda item. I think you're the family that's here to present and discuss?
Yeah.
All right, so maybe we could move that.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
Maybe I'll withdraw my motion and make a new one, where is it? What one?
Number 7A.
7A, all right, so, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move, that we move item 7A, uh, push it up to, uh, right after five.
Okay, we have a motion, in a second. Motion in a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, uh, Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We are now on 7A new business, the scholarship named in remembrance of Scott and Nicholas. And a look to the superintendent if he has any comments as well as our guests.
Also, uh, the families, um, of Scott and Nicholas have requested, uh, their memory on scholarship fund for, I think, basketball specifically, and I think they'd like to discuss, uh, the scholarship and some fundraising ideas and those types of things, so we're really happy to have them here tonight to talk a little bit about, um, Scott Nicholas and, and, uh, talk about their scholarship.
Are we recording?
Yeah, we are.
So you might want, um, so that you can be seen on the camera. Sorry.
Welcome to the school meeting. So, uh, if you had anything you'd like to share with us in a moment, you are absolutely welcome to do so. On behalf of the school committee and the school system, of course, we want to convey our condolences and know that, uh, those of us that didn't know Nicholas and Scott very well have learned to, to know them and love, and, uh, love them, so, uh, it is wonderful that this is before us tonight and we can't wait to hear what you have to share.
I don't, I don't really know what this looks like.
Go for it.
Essentially, we're the family of Nicholas, um, I'm his mother and this is his sister, and so we wanted to have a positive come out of this situation. I don't know if I'll get through this, I don't know. So our hope is just to create some kind of fund to a fundraiser for these students, a scholarship fund for students coming up, just to give them something to go to college or to, you know, to obviously keep the boys' memories alive, but also have some great come out of this, and they were, they've impacted this community, I feel like, greatly, and we've had such an outpouring of love and support, and we just want to share that and, and be able to, I guess, just roll this into something positive for some of the other students from Murdoch, so we're hoping to kind of continue, we've raised funds already so far, um, like, my number has a total, I'm guessing, I do not.
We're getting close to about 5,000 right now, if you want the checks to drop off, um, so, we just want to kind of keep their memory alive, they, they were at Murdoch and they graduated from Murdoch together, and they love basketball, and we just want to find something positive to, I feel, have raised money in regards to Nicholas's funeral and responsibly, we should have raised money as well, uh, so we just want it to keep alive and, uh, we're looking towards possibly trying to do some type of annual, um, basketball tournament, we've had some ideas from his previous coaches, um, and other members of the community, there's, Murdoch has been incredible, their teachers, they have been absolutely amazing, um, so we're really just trying to work towards something with that, so, uh, we were originally just donating and then we thought that basketball scholarship would be beneficial to the community in general and, um, be able to help students that may financially need assistance.
Mr. Chair, Larry, go ahead, Larry.
So, again, our condolences, uh, I did see them both play, I went to many of the games and, uh, they had a tremendous team, they played really well together, I enjoyed watching them play, Nicholas in particular was a terrific athlete, left-hander, he was, yeah, he's a left-hander, yeah, and, so, and I really enjoyed watching them play and watching them compete, um, so I think your idea is a good one, and, um, I think a basketball tournament would be perfect, uh, I coached here in Winston for 15 years, including basketball, and so I've got some ideas, if you'd like to hear them at some point, um, some quick ways you can make money, but, uh, the scholarship money, now, who would, who would, uh, who are you targeting for a scholarship, would it be?
We were thinking somebody from the basketball piece of Murdoch.
Boys or girls?
Of course, the girls, absolutely.
Yeah, that applied for the, as long as they were a basketball player, Murdoch, played for Murdoch? Okay, so.
We didn't think that was needed, we would be open, it's not, you know, we just obviously targeted that kind of population for boys that raised that.
Yeah.
The end of the day, we want to help somebody who would, I think, financially could need that, towards, it is a big expense.
Yeah, yes, I know. Enough for my own kids to raise.
Exactly.
So it is expensive, but I, I want to thank you for, for doing this in that memory, I think it's a great idea, uh, and, uh, relating it to basketball, I think will also be an incentive for, we need more kids to play, and maybe if they know that there's a scholarship at the end of the road, maybe you can get more kids to participate, um, and, uh, it's just a lovely way to turn something that is so painful into something that is so joyful. Uh, I can, I can see it at graduation, handing out the scholarships, it's just fabulous, so congratulations on that, uh, positive thinking and turning something into a real positive event, uh, just, uh, we just want to make sure that we have all the, the details, so this would go through our, would this be separate or what, does it come into the school account?
Uh, I think a lot of our scholarship funds are held separately, but, you know, we work with those folks to get those set up.
Some of them are through, are done through the school, right?
Some are, some aren't, just depends on how they're individually set up, so, as you know, we have a number of scholarships at the end of the year, they're presented at, you know, graduation, alumni dinner, all those types of things, so, um, you know, we're certainly happy to work with you to set that up and make it official and, uh, establish that so it can be something that you, you know, at that time of year, happy to have your partner to work that way, their working place, uh, in the office and so.
I know, you know, Nicholas struggled in school, he was always the funny guy, and basketball really helped him, helped kind of give him something to really work for and, and give him that motivation, because he wasn't always motivated for his education. Shocking, I know, but, um, basketball was, was a big deal for him, for that, and, I mean, that's part of the reason why this is so important, that we feel, is that there are those kids who need that, they need some kind of, you know, when they go, it's going to be like, oh, I want to do this, so, so that's another reason why, you know, we're just thinking of doing that.
Part of the reason sports exist, schools, right? You know, it's really to bring students another connection to the school and get them organized, yeah.
Greg?
Well, my initial question has sort of been answered, I was wondering whether this was something that you wanted to give, um, to, to one boy and one girl or whether it would go to one student, uh, or, I mean, cause that, those are the kinds of details, I guess, that would need to, to be worked out, how you'd want to distribute the money and, is it something, is there a particular, I think, I don't know how far, but it's, you thought this so far, is there a particular amount of money that you want to give each year or is it just whatever gets raised is what you're going to give or?
I mean, I haven't worked it out. It's been a long spark.
Yeah, as opposed to putting it into an, you know, putting it into an account and raising as much as you can and rolling it over.
Right, I mean, I'd probably be open to feedback and kind of support in what would be best, and we could also discuss kind of looking at, obviously, if you don't raise a ton one year, you're gonna not want to bring it up maybe, but, or maybe there's even more students that need it more so one year than another, so.
Do, do we have, I mean, maybe Mr. Murphy, but do we have anyone that could, could work with them, if you're looking for this sort of thing, that could help advise them on this sort of thing?
I'm sorry.
Karen?
So, I used to be scholarship coordinator at one of my jobs, so that's what I was gonna say, is that if you'd like, you know, work with you a little bit on this, I can help you figure out some of those details, and I'm sure that we have somebody in the school district who can also do that, but.
Yeah, it's the department, right? It has, they handle a couple scholarships, so, so you have, you have support, you have support, you can work out the details.
You probably know this one, that we're gonna get as possible, so, you know, we can work with the guidance department and, because we have so many different types of scholarships and they all work a little bit differently, how do you want it to work? So, you know, one of the things we can do is just set up a nice little meeting in this wine hole and kind of talk about what those options look like, how some different ones are set up and, and established and how they disperse the funds and, um, you know, our students apply or, you know, everybody gets to see, um, sort of the written requests for scholarships and so, you know, you would be a part of that process to get to choose who, who receives the funds and that type of thing, so it is a full process that we do at the end of the year and certainly have a, how many is in this wine hole or early, whenever you're ready, we can see that and kind of talk about some of those things as well.
So, do we, oh.
I can make a vote to staff, to officially establish a scholarship if you think that you do.
Mr. Chair?
Greg?
Um, I would make a motion that the school committee vote to establish, uh, the Scott Leverdor and Nicholas Roy Basketball Scholarship, uh, for Murdoch High School.
Second, I agree with the motion, second, thank you, any discussion? Right, Karen? Larry?
Aye.
Greg? Aye. And the Chair votes aye, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, I think I appreciate it, it's, um.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, very great job. Thank you so much. And we'll just get in contact.
We'll get in contact with Liz.
Sorry.
Uh, let's see.
Number six, I think, superintendent's report.
Yeah, we are on number six. Superintendent may be with, uh, someone else for a moment, uh, should we consider moving to old business? Have to entertain a motion if anyone's interested. Thank you, Karen, second?
Second.
Second from Larry, any discussion? Greg?
Uh, aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are on old business, subcommittee definitions in charge of C and D.
Got these for you tonight, I don't know quite frankly that they're necessarily ready to, to vote on this evening, um, but I wanted to, to give those to you, I think, I think it would be, why is it this point for the committee to have the chance to look them over, make any additions or corrections or any underchanges that they might want to bring before the committee maybe at, at our next meeting, um, or a future meeting, and I have to admit, I was remiss, though the one committee that I missed was the finance subcommittee, being averse to budgets as I am.
To break out hives?
He did, that's why.
So, um, I will, I will work on that one for, for our next meeting, and I also did, just threw these out here, uh, for the heck of it, I want to pass those down, uh, other subcommittees for consideration at some point, a couple of them are self-explanatory, building consolidation committee and the CPAC subcommittee, the other two, um, the green school subcommittee and the state delegation liaison or subcommittee, could be one or two people, um, have some just very good state of that, um, will give you an idea of what the, what those positions would be for.
I'm guessing these might have come from some of your experience with other school committees?
Uh, yeah, and actually there's another one I, I want to add to this, which was the academic excellence, uh, subcommittee.
And this came from, partially from the list from wrong too, right? Like, I remember from the, now, the CPAC subcommittee, um, for liaison, I'd have to check, because I'm not sure that we could legally do that, because, I mean, as a parent, I could be a member of the CPAC, however, I don't think, because the CPAC, I, I used to chair the Boston CPAC, and you don't want to do anything that would discourage the CPAC from being an open and commensurate place for parents of people and be able to speak about what they need to speak about, so I would need to double check and make sure.
I think we've had people in the past, haven't we?
Well, Newton, Newton has, um, something set up like this, I don't know it's necessarily to go to each CPAC meeting where they're discussing business, but to set up a liaison with, um, the, some or all of the parents that are on the committee just to discuss issues that would be relevant to them in, uh, within the school district, not, not specific students, but general policies as it relates to special education.
Well, the CPAC actually is set up to, in, in the way the law is written, and I'm just, I'm, I'm telling you what IDEA and, and national laws say, CPAC is actually set up to coordinate with the special ed director and other administrative personnel to do exactly that, so that's what they're supposed to be doing, so, generally, because school committee isn't part of the day-to-day operation of the school district, you wouldn't have school committee members necessarily doing that, I'm not saying that it's a bad idea to have a school committee representative being part of that, I'm just saying that we might have to try carefully, I, I'll call the Federation, because I'm a trainer for them, I will call the Federation and just make sure we wouldn't be violating any laws because if Newton's doing that, I'm a little, I'm just wondering.
Okay, I, I can bring back the details of, more from the way, from the way Newton has it set up.
Greg, are you looking to table this?
I'm looking to table the vote, yeah.
Yeah, so why don't we just table it?
And to give, like I said, give people a chance to look through these and make any changes and bring them back before the committee.
And can you, if you're gonna write up your, your hive inducing, um, financial subcommittee and any other ones, do you want to send it to us before we?
Yeah, sure.
That way, if we bring it up to the next meeting or the thing after, we can just vote on them.
I can do that.
Mr. Chair?
Greg?
I'd like to.
Uh, Larry, sorry.
A lot of people got us mixed up, we look so much alike.
Yeah.
You really do.
I'd like to make a motion that we table, uh, 8A, Article 8A until a future meeting, after some.
Review.
Some significant review and opportunity to, to review by all of people on the board.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in seconded, any discussion? Uh, only thought that I have is I'm supportive of the motion, uh, but I suggest that we not waste any time and encourage, uh, those folks on our group that are members of these existing committees to at least review these drafts, so that when we come back, we're not coming back and tabling again.
Yeah, yeah, we need to get this done, because we've tabled it a number of times.
Right, I've only read the policy one so far, but it looks, you know, pretty decent to me, I'm sure it can be tweaked here and there, but, um, let's come back on at least these guys with the ability to vote. Okay, other comments? We have a motion in a second, uh, those in favor, Greg?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right. That was 8A, I think we moved that above six, so we're back to superintendent's report, number six, A, superintendent.
Greg? You, uh, we have listed on your transportation update, but I'm gonna, just a couple of report outs on a few things, um, school opening this week, obviously, students returned on Tuesday, um, so we've had, as you probably know, the school calendar, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, uh, in, in school this week, we're out of school, there's no school Friday, um, and then of course Monday's Labor Day, so, uh, we've had a really, uh, nice and smooth opening, I think the transportation was much improved over last year.
I was gonna say, you know.
So, it's really been a nice opening, I think it's been really positive, um, you know, folks are really happy to be back, it was great the first day to see the kids all back in the schools, I mean, it's, it's always awkward to be in empty schools, um, so having the kids back in, you know, it's really great, there's a lot of energy, um, you know, we had our orientation of bringing teachers back beginning last Thursday and again Monday, we had a really successful orientation, um, we had a fantastic speaker on Monday, is a keynote speaker, um, Dr. LaVoy, who, who came and gave a, a great keynote for us on Tuesday as well, we got a lot of really positive feedback on, uh, from faculties, a national, international speaker, primarily a lot of special ed, um, but wasn't really focused on that in this particular instance, but it was really just about how to support our kids and, you know, just looking through that lens of support and, and how that feeds into the academics, so, a lot of really nice feedback from that, so we've, we've had a really nice week, um, with the school reopening, pre, excuse me, kindergarten, uh, returns on Tuesday after Labor Day, so they'll begin, uh, Tuesday, so the kindergarten teachers have, you know, they've been kind of bringing kids in and assessing when necessary, I think a kindergartner did show up on Tuesday, um, why not? And so, uh, we certainly welcomed the kindergartner, uh, and then, uh, pre-K actually returns the following week, so, all of those things kind of get staged in, they do have a B degree and some of those types of things, um, so, those two things are, are still imminent, so, um, it's been a nice opening. Yeah, 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 um, in terms of transportation, which is specifically on here, just a quick update relative to that overall, not necessarily just the reopening, so, um, you know, if you, you may or may not have received calls or concerns, I don't know, but, um, I, transportation over the past number of years in Winston has, um, been interesting, uh, it goes back probably to at least 10 years, where at some point, and I struggled to understand it until more recently as to why we were, so, um, and, and, you know, I think Greg will have the best understanding of this, just as someone who has had to kind of deal with transportation, um, we've had them here over the past year, but I couldn't understand why I could never find out who our bus riders were versus who our walkers are as an example, like in a meaningful way, and it turns out that it's because a number of years ago, um, at some point someone sort of made the edit, everybody can have a bus, and so, um, instead of sort of going to families and saying, you know, are you gonna walk, ride, you know, what, what are you doing, it turned into, instead of picking the appropriate children based on distances, we just submit the entire enrollment to the bus company and everybody is assigned a bus, whether you get on it or not is irrelevant, you get a bus, people are much against a bus. I struggled to wrap my head around that last year, trying to figure out why do we have all of this, you know, piece, so, that's what I've basically come to learn, um, on top of that, we've had some very kind bus drivers, um, over the years, I think is the right way to say that, in that, um, you know, a lot of them are local, um, and know the families, and so when, you know, uh, someone says, I really need Johnny picked up, Brady, oh, I'll just, I'll stop what you're doing, the bus company refers to these as sweetheart stops, so, uh, over time, between everybody gets a bus and everybody kind of gets a, a bus stop, um, you know, it, it also sort of speaks to why we have these very long routes, you know, you have, we, we always struggle, why are the routes so long, well, it's because we, you know, we're, we're making a lot of stops, um, so this year, uh, between ourselves and the bus company, we kind of wanted to get our arms around that a little bit, and there was an initial establishment of a, of a one and a half mile sort of threshold for walkers, and this is specifically middle school and up, elementary, we're not really having any, we don't have any issues around the stops or whatnot, um, elementary and, excuse me, sixth and up, we, we moved to sort of say, let's, let's look, let's look at a mile and a half, the bus company did, um, there's some families that weren't happy with that because I've always gotten a bus, I still want a bus, and I get that from a, from a parent perspective, it's a big change, um, we're working with the bus company right now to kind of maybe talk about moving that threshold back to a mile, which seems to be more appropriate, so to give you an idea of what that looks like. So to give you an idea of what that looks like, CBS, if you just look at CBS to Murdoch Middle High School, it's dead on a mile. So if you just kind of in your mind, think about what a walk looks like for a kid, there's your mile. So, and, and then in addition to sort of limiting the stops, it, it, it's okay to walk to the end of your street to get on the bus.
That's one of my questions. I know it's probably a question of safety or liability or whatever, but I, I notice like that we have, before my granddaughter gets picked up, the bus is stopping to pick somebody up that's ten yards down the road.
You can look right down the street.
And, yeah, it, it just seems a little.
So we think it could be a little more efficient from the transportation route, you know, and I, I think as well, when you look at a child that in middle school and above, that lives a mile away, it's about a twenty-minute walk. If you're riding the bus, it, it, that could be an hour, that could be an hour all told by the time you get out of the house, get to the bus stop. You know, we would like to think that that bus stop might be the last one going up Central Street. But that's not guaranteed. It might be going out Maple, and, you know, coming back around and doing those types of things. So we're just trying to be a little bit more efficient and look at it, you know, in a way that makes sense for the bus company and for our families. So we're working on that right now. We're working closely with them to sort of move that back to, to a mile. Look at what that does for our bus capacities. It adds about forty-five, in theory, it would add forty-five to fifty, forty-five to sixty students onto the existing bus routes, but of course, we don't know where those are yet. So if it's a bus with high capacity already filled, what does that look like? So they're, they've been working on that this week. We expect to get feedback from them, I guess, on Tuesday or Wednesday, so that we can make a decision about, you know, more intelligently and, and move that threshold back to a mile. But again, does it impact elementary? Elementary hasn't had any problems. Kindergarten, as you know, is a little different. We meet at the, you know, there's gotta be a person there to pick up and drop off, those types of things. This is specifically secondary.
May I make a suggestion going forward?
Chair.
Um, sorry, Mr. Chair. Just, and, and I know we're not Boston, but, and, and obviously in Boston, we have sixty-three thousand students, so we had to do that. But, you know, they would send out, you know, are you going to meet us or are we not meeting us?
Correct.
Right? So I think going forward, maybe in the spring, or when somebody signs up, however we do with that registration, whatever, we need to think about that, about doing that going forward. Not now, obviously, but whatever.
Right.
Also, and I know at least in Boston. But if, if we have a situation where somebody is that, I know you're a mile away now, right? If you, if you're at one point four, seven, six miles, I think, you know, the bus company needs to make a little, or you guys need to make a little adjustment, you know? Or if, if somebody has a doctor's note or if there's, you know, something, and they may not be on a special ed plan to get transportation, you know, but they may not be able to, and how, and, and that kind of leads into one of my questions was thinking about a walk from CBS to the high school in one of our, let's say, gates that we don't call off school, and the weather is absolutely horrific. You know, I know that at times we have very good bus drivers, and they're known to pick up students long way, you know?
That'll be a standing arrangement.
Okay.
Standing arrangement. Bad weather, bus drivers, and we've already discussed this with the bus company. They will pick up the students in bad weather along the way.
I wanted to make sure that doesn't go away.
The other piece to your point is there's, uh, we, we look at anybody that makes a phone call to say, are there extended wait services? So we've had some families this year that have students, you know, special education student, possibly in a van, they've got a student in Memorial, and they can't get their kid, the sixth grader, all these jugs. There's, there's definitely, folks call, we make exceptions, and we get them on the bus.
No, I think you've done, I think you've done a great job with what I know you've had to deal with, but I, I just, I think that even going forward, even before you necessarily have to get a phone call, I think that the bus company needs to look at something, and if it's like four, you know, four point nine five, you know, or something silly like that, they tend to, or whatever we decide the measurement is.
Mr. Chair.
Very.
Who, who makes the decision as to whether the kids ride or not? Is it our office or is it the bus company?
It's ultimately our office. They will do what we ask them to do. They're very accommodating.
So I think that if parents know that they have special circumstances, whatever they are, and they contact the central office, I think that they can work out something. And then, I, I heard you say that earlier, the bus company will do what we tell them to do.
They're very accommodating. Yeah, it's a phone call. We've made, you know, we've made some accommodations this week. It's one phone call, and usually that, that is managed the next morning. Possibly that afternoon. It's a little difficult, but the child's already at school and trying to get that communicated, but nine times out of ten, there's an accommodation that takes place the next morning.
And I do want to say that I think.
Think so.
What, what you need to do very well from whatever.
Thank you. So, you know, it's, it's a tough change. It's been a longstanding way that business has been done in Wichita, and which is why there isn't the, the form that goes out. Like, all these things were questions in my head that I couldn't quite wrap my head around. So there will definitely be forms that go out going forward. What do you want to do? It just helps us plan better, and we're more effective in emergencies. There's, there's a, there's a litany of reasons that that makes a lot of sense, and it just hasn't been done for many years, and we will start doing that.
Now, what about, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. What about, um, so I live on Ash Street, and as you know, there's, there's no sidewalks. I don't, I don't need a bus. I have no children anymore in this district. Aren't you happy? However, when Vermin was in the district, I mean, we did have a bus until we decided to pay the bus anymore. So he, like, he, yeah, he got picked up, and that's great, but I mean, there are no sidewalks. There's, there's no corners for them to stand on, you know, obviously during, so streets like that, you know, I do worry. So when you have streets like that where they have to, are, are we still having them walk up to the, I mean, obviously, they're on a side street. I'm on the main road more than.
I'll have to say, I, I don't know the streets of Wichita enough.
I know.
Most of the ones down in town that are within a mile of the high school are, you're generally gonna find sidewalks.
Yeah.
And we do rely on the bus company. That's where we rely on the bus company.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may.
All right.
Suggest, um, I, I would suggest that anybody that has any questions about whether or not they need support, need, or if their bus stop, or there isn't a bus stop, or there are no sidewalks, or things like those, are things that need to come to your office attention, and that they need to bring into your attention, and then you make the adjustments as, as necessary. So if certain areas are not safe, then, you know, find a place to pick the kids up and make sure they get to school safely. But at the same time, we also wanna remember why you made the change. I, you know, I, I did the busing one year for a school district. When I first retired, they heard I was retired, and they asked me to do the busing. And one of the things I did eliminate was the sweetheart stops, because you would go to a, you know, heavily populated area, and the buses were stopping at every single house, when they could've just gone down the street, and all the kids could've met there. And it increased the bus time, but as you said, could make a twenty-minute bus ride into a sixty or ninety-minute bus ride. So we, we eliminated that kind of stuff, so I understand why. So not everybody is gonna be happy, and not everybody is gonna get a ride. But I agree with Karen that we need to, when, when people have concerns, that we need to investigate, take a ride down to the bus stop or down to the area of town, the neighborhood, take a look. I use Google Earth to kind of get an idea of what the, the road looked like and how dangerous it was and that kind of stuff. And then you make the adjustments, and so that's it. But some people are gonna have to walk, that's the bottom line. Some people are gonna end up walking, and that's.
And if I may, they, uh, we're working with the town right now as well on Safe Routes to Schools.
Yeah.
So we're in stage two, I should say there. The town is, is in stage two. They're, they're leading this, um, initiative. So there's already been some new sidewalks around town. You see them in different places right now as well. They're doing all of Central Street, but that actually stops at, at Maple. So all the construction is going on. There will not be any construction sidewalks beyond Maple Street up towards Murdoch. However, that being said, that's where the Safe Routes to School grant comes into play. So we've done a lot of work with them over the past year. We've toured the town. We've actually walked all over to sort of have a look at that. So they're, they're really doing a nice job. Brian Crowe's been working at EPW. We've been working closely with them to try to, whatever information they need and so on and so forth, to see if we can get some improved sidewalks, basically from, I would, and I'm not, again, I don't know the streets of Wichita well, but from Maple up to essentially the entrance to the high, the high school, the school and Memorial, so. It's definitely a process.
I was kind of, that's where I was kind of going, was maybe working with the town, and we had areas where you saw that you had clusters of kids in the areas that were like mine, that were more rural, as far as, we don't live in town where there are sidewalks. Maybe we could work with the town to like have a designated area for the bus stop that, you know, somehow could be marked without affecting the town budget to, you know, create sidewalks necessarily, but, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to snow, you know, throw something out there that maybe we can talk to the town about.
I talked to Mr. Brode.
Just because I know you're, if you're looking now at, you know, adjusting, maybe if you look at where the kids are most highly hungry with, you can try and figure out where you might have like three or four minute, four or four kids, given that our population is so small, it would be a whole game.
Mr. Superintendent, thank you for that update. That's good, important information.
Can I get two other quick, quick hit items that are also on our future agenda items, but I just wanted to give you a check in. Remote meetings ability, there's a, this, excuse me, the town manager has hired a consultant to come in, he's coming in tomorrow to look at our existing system, to start from scratch and look to see what it would take to implement just a whole new system. I, I have been informed, and I don't know, I'm not the expert down there. I've never walked into that back room. However, I'm told that in order to actually play audio across, to broadcast the audio, they actually have to start a consent package. And so that kind of gives you the idea of why we might have some limitations around what we're trying to do with these remote meetings.
It's tiny and.
Yeah, it's not pretty.
The technology is pretty.
It's a little dated.
Yeah, dated.
So there is a meeting tomorrow. The consultant is coming tomorrow to have a look, as I understand it, to, to look at the system and talk about like, what would it take to start from scratch, instead of trying to retrofit, invest in something more meaningful. So that's, that's just, that's what I know about that, but I wanted to give you that update, because I know it's, it's, so we should have something more informative, maybe on the fifteenth. It's actually here we're doing the consulting at, so. Uh, the other piece is it's on a future agenda item, and I just wanted to give you the financial share of the town. The town manager and I meet, are meeting, I believe it's next Wednesday to kick off those discussions, and we can further this along before the next budget season. That is my report for the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Those are, those are good updates. That does bring us to future agenda items. We just heard a brief update on nine C and nine D. We do have the data presentations, which are likely to continue probably as soon as our next school committee meeting, I'm guessing.
If I may, uh, we were informed today that we won't, we, we will not be able to do those on fifteenth. And the reason I say that is I had an update on MCAS today. So MCAS scores will still be embargoed by, by the fifteenth. With that, you know, meaning, central office has those, the principals have those, because we are not allowed to share those at that point. I would envision in early October, we should be able to share, not only with the school committee, but with the peers as well. So I would anticipate an October date for the data presentations, which would go along with improvement plans for each of the schools.
If I could request, thinking way ahead, at the last meeting, Jonathan's presentation was about the new assessment, I think it was called STAR.
Renaissance, yeah.
Renaissance STAR. I believe the cadence of that assessment was early in the fall, early in the spring. And it might make sense that seeing as the date went back quickly, that sometime shortly after that second assessment. Maybe, Mary, perhaps?
Sure.
Would be a good time to either yourself or have Jonathan back kind of walk us through at least the progression. We don't have MCAS really to compare, you know, from specific year to specific year. MAP is a different assessment that has some ability, I guess it sounds like, to correlate, but not perfect. So the, the progress that's made from whenever the first test is, I think that's in September, to whenever the second test happens, which I think is in January, I think that would be really interesting to us. Other questions about those items or other future?
Yeah, just, uh, Mr. Chair, with the next, with the fifteenth, if we needed to put it off another week, we could, but I was wondering if that would be a convenient meeting for us to do our yearly sort of meet and greet, starting at five thirty for the new teachers before the school committee meeting?
I'm, I'm, I'm on it up to it. September fifteenth?
We can get that together. Two weeks from now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So that is September fifteenth in the five thirty range, I mean, on that night, six o'clock, those gears at work.
Yeah.
And, and let me ask, regarding new teachers, and I don't want to just single them out. I've noticed, uh, some school websites that I've looked at, that they do have pictures of faculty with their school in there. And I was wondering if, maybe at least to start off, if we could do that with the new teachers on our website, but I would eventually like to see the entire faculty on our website, so that, um, parents know who they're looking for when they come into.
When they walk in.
Yeah. So if that's something that we could arrange to.
So I'd like to add on to what Bert said. I know that it's been historically a meet and greet for the teachers. We may get for all new staff.
Well, I mean, I think that's, I think we say teachers a little generic, but it's all new staff.
But I, I, I think that because we say teachers, people assume it's just teachers, and even the staff is, and it's just, it's just, it's just. So we need to be very clear on communicating, like anybody that is a new staff.
All new personnel.
All new personnel, thank you. Just because I don't want any of our personnel to feel, and, and let them know that even if they're old with personnel, you know, like, if they're, if they're already a staff, like.
If they're our age. Larry.
I was gonna say, yes, if they're already, if they're, even if they're already in the system.
Anybody's welcome.
Anybody's welcome. Because, you know, I think it's great, because I think that sometimes, you know, a lot of people don't necessarily have time to go and meet the teachers or, you know, even like they, I do great things about certain cafeteria workers or whomever, and I think it'd be great if they have the time and want to come up and meet, you know, with us. It would be awesome. Now, as far as another future agenda item, I don't know if you have the form. I know I can get the form, but we need to designate a MAFS delegate and second.
A what?
A MAFS delegate for the conference, to be able to vote at the conference.
M A S C.
M A S C, sorry. Yes, not, not, not those kind of.
I'll tell you.
I, I just added, that's no.
Yes.
You mean a MAFS representative?
Yeah, it's you. It's not me. Do you think I would be bringing up a MAFS representative? Come on, Larry.
That's what it sounded like.
No. I am all set to go.
For those that are new in the room.
Sorry, so the MAFS, the, the MAFS Association is school committee, schools of conference every year, and they do the whole, you know, the annual meeting, and they vote on, um, and they do the whole, you know, the annual meeting, and they vote on, um, basically, you know, what they're gonna focus on, and what, um, policies we can do. I can send you the link. But basically, like, I'm going to be attending from, um, November 2nd through the 5th, down to 8th. So, um, we need to have a delegate be able to vote as I live as long as, and we need to have a second, that, e, even if, just on paper. So I can get the form and email it all of you.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so if we can put that on the agenda, 'cause we have to vote on them. And if you wanna go, you should, um, contact Liz.
Uh, Liz did send that out to all the school committee members, um, and, uh, we'll have a, have a delegation, possibly a delegation of one there. Uh, I've got that.
Well, I was, I was lucky to be able to, to enable to be able to.
I've done.
I know, you don't want to
I've done. I don't know, we'll see, I'll think about it.
Going back quickly to Greg's, uh, proposal about more of a, an online presence, uh, for our teacher staff and, and others. Uh, I think we were sort of, uh, setting the, the tone there, we, yeah, we agreed to do the same for ourselves. I'm not seeing those changes on the school committee website yet, but I'm guessing that might be because, um, the staff are waiting for some things from us.
Yeah.
So a check in for anyone that hasn't provided a head and shoulders picture and a very brief bio, uh, they should do so to Liz Littoria as soon as possible.
Us?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll have, I gotta go and have Liz shoot a picture, I guess. I can, she has my bio, but she doesn't have a picture, so it's not good.
You can take a picture of you tonight if you want.
No.
Sitting like this.
Hammer shot.
So, uh, the, the, uh, proposal that Greg made was, was a great one, right? To have a, a visual presence of who is teaching your student, who, uh, who is teaching your son or daughter, who's gonna be in the building, who you should see when the door opens, that, that's great, what a, what a way to build community. But to ask teachers and staff to do that is certainly a request that, that not everyone will, you know, certainly receive very well. And we should definitely, um, not only because of the positions we hold, but just because of that thought, lead the charge, by doing the same, is that the example? I don't think that's something that can require.
We can't require it, but I think anybody that wants to can do it.
I would suspect that a great number of the back.
Oh, yeah, support of it.
Any staff members?
Some schools you go in, they, they have the faculty on a big board listed with their pictures and stuff, so.
One is picture day.
But I don't know how many would not want that.
I'm just thinking, if we, if we coordinate with the picture day, maybe have the staff's pictures done then with them to be put up on the website, just to follow.
Yeah, one of, one of school pictures, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
We don't know.
We don't know, but, we don't know.
I don't have that date off the top of my head, but I can get it. Anyway, teachers do have availability, they, they get pictures taken and the whole thing. If we need, uh, folks in this room to get a picture taken that day, we, you, absolutely made accommodations.
We could do it at Memorial, get our picture taken with a rainbow and a unicorn.
That's so awesome.
I like it.
We can, four of us be in that picture. We should, and that's the other thing, we should all, honestly, we should have all five of us in a picture too.
Okay.
As the school committee.
Yeah, I like it.
'Cause I think that's one of the things that, you know, that, that makes a group.
Uh, other future agenda items?
Except the MASC, the MASC, no, no MASC representative.
MASC.
All right, good deal. Uh, we do have an executive session this evening, uh, to return from executive session for a vote. But our agenda does have closing comments before the executive session, so unless folks really wanna take it out of order, we can do closing comments now. Okay, and therefore, we'll start with Karen.
I would like to, obviously, I'm wearing a mask. I am not sick any longer, you know, which I am very glad for, but I will be most likely wearing masks most of the time because I did go through COVID again, and it was horrible. And I would correct, I would say that the numbers, I don't know what the numbers are today, I could not look them up, um, but I would encourage anybody that feels the need to, if you feel sick, please test, because whatever this version is, I don't know what they're calling it now, that is going around is absolutely horrendous, and it put me, it made me very ill, and the reason I didn't make last week's meeting was I was hospitalized. So I encourage everybody, if you feel even the slightest upset, sir, please take tests.
Glad you're well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
I just wanna echo that, I'm glad that you've, you're recovering, and it seemed to be a lot better space than you were last week, so it's great to have you back, Karen. I just wanna thank everybody that contributed to making the opening as smooth as it was, and all the work that was done. I wanna thank the custodial staff and all the people who worked on the facilities this summer, because we did see, uh, a lot of great work done this summer on the facilities, uh, they were spick and span, so that was great. I wanna welcome all the new staff, uh, new personnel, to our school district. I think they're gonna have a great experience, I think we got a good team, and I think it's gonna be a great school year. So, thanks for all the work that you've done, Mr. King and your staff, to get a smooth opening, and I welcome all the new people. And finally, I just wanna say, we're gonna have a great school year, I can just feel it.
I do not have any closing comments tonight except for a great school, start to the school year, and, uh, and looking forward to it.
Great. Um, just, again, I wanna thank the, um, women that were here before us tonight, our visitors, uh, thank them again for, uh, thinking about setting up a scholarship for some kids at Murdoch that may need it, it's a great way for them to, to turn their loss into a, a gain for somebody else, and I appreciate that, um, that way of thinking. And as far as the transportation, I can only say that from our little corner of Benjamin Street, uh, things were much better at the start of the school year this time around than they were last year again. We have to remember that last year, we were just coming out of a very odd situation, and it was not easy to recover from, but, buses are running on schedule, and Ms. Monica is greeting the kids that get on her bus with a smile, and so, so I, I appreciate that, and, uh, to sort of echo what Larry has said, thanks for what you've done, and thanks to the rest of the staff, uh, from, you know, the custodial staff, and the parents, and the teachers, and secretarial staff for everything that they put in to getting the district open. And I, I feel as Larry does, this is gonna be a good school year.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
May I add one more? In, in addition to echoing both Larry and Greg, and, and thanking Mr. King and all the staff, new, established, and everybody that made the opening late for the first week and hopefully going forward, I would like to also thank the students who made it every first week back, 'cause I think that we often forget to thank them, um, because without them, we couldn't do this. I just wanna thank all of them.
That was at number 11, or on our agenda, which is scheduled to be an executive session, happy to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Greg.
I would move that we go into executive session to conduct strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and to now, we've got two to go here, uh, with non-union personnel, and readjourn an open session, never mind, I was looking at the, while in motion.
I second.
Uh, is there any discussion?
Yeah, one quick thing, number 12. I, do we have to put those together?
Uh, no, we'll cut out what you think.
Or vote, and, and then come out, okay.
Yeah.
All right, just, that, that was my question, no.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I stopped, I was wondering that myself. Greg, if, um, if I can, uh, request a friendly amendment to your motion. Uh, the motion that is printed on the agenda discusses preparation for negotiations, we will be discussing negotiations, but not necessarily preparing for them, we consider just adjusting the motion to enter the executive session for discussion about negotiations.
I'll accept that amendment.
That's an amendment, second on the amendment. Discussion on the new motion. And all in fig, uh, Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are in executive session.
Go.
All right, we are back in open session, uh, for the final item on our agenda of this meeting on September 1st. Uh, and that item is number 12, the ASME Council 93, AFL-CIO agreement, uh, memorandum of agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I'd make a motion that we table item 12 until our next meeting on September 15th.
I will second that.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, Greg?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it is unanimous, tabled until September 15th. And that's the end of our agenda, Greg?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Second. Second.
Second, any discussion?
Yes. Before we leave our agenda, just wanna wish the chair a very happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Hello, hello, hello.
Aye.
Yeah.
Well, change, what you're
Chicken.
All in favor of the motion?
Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
And I vote aye, we're adjourned, thank you.
Chicken, chicken, chicken.